Look at you.
I was doing some politicking.
Oh, sure.
Okay, let's proceed to then unfinished business and we will move to the noise abatement options for pickleball activity in Gilchrist Park.
So, we have in front of you some options. There are others out there, but these are ones that have come to the forefront. A vegetative buffer around the pickleball courts, not all of it, but we still have to work out where some of the vegetative buffer might conflict with the future plans for the Phase Two, but we could put in some vegetated buffer. We could put in the acoustic barrier, fence material, and additional fence posts. We could do that on its own or in conjunction with landscaping. Or we can also change the location of the court within the park and switch them. Tennis becomes the pickleball, pickleball becomes the tennis. The costs are associated with each of those options. A lot of discussion has been about parking. We know that when we finish Phase Two, there will be no parking on the grass. We will have diagonal parking along with a considerable amount of off-street parking that's going to be put into the new, to the renovated area. So, a lot of the parking issues, if people can wait that long, a lot of those parking issues will subside with the Phase Two improvements. Yes, we could go ahead and ban the parking today if we wanted to, but all of that will get resolved with Phase Two when we finally get that work completed. So, we have some options for you. I guess we need to decide what we want to do.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, oh, excuse me, and I didn't finish. Yes, we can always revise ours. You have that ability, and we can always reduce the number of courts. We have that ability as well. It is a public park.
Before we discuss, I think it's interesting that the way this evolved and that four pickleball courts were, they were temporary at Gilchrist Park, taped on, I think it was, and then it was expanded. I don't remember any community comments at that point in time, and then it was expanded to eight, and then it was expanded to the sixteen, or not sixteen, but it was the eight courts, and it was then made permanent. It's really the evolution of this. I think Debbie used it as a good term. We need a collaborative solution because it was a community consensus at the time that this was the right thing to do. So, but we've learned from this, and we will go forward, and we all will be all right when we get done with this. So, Gary, comments?
Yes. First of all, I will support whatever our consensus is to temper the situation in Gilchrist Park. However, I'd like to complicate it a little bit, at least for consideration, for a more permanent and appropriate solution from my perspective. Several years ago, I had supported the consideration for, that turned out to be quite controversial, of the sale of some property to a private developer over in the Henry Street area. Public opinion was very adamant that we would like to keep that for future, even though we weren't going to do anything in the immediate future for park development. I see this as an opportunity to start the beginning of using that land more appropriately for the public good as a city asset. There is a piece of ground that appears to me that would be very acceptable to relocating pickleball that I don't believe would be within 600 feet of any other residential areas. It would be behind the library over by History Park. There would already be restroom facilities available there because you have the library, you have History Park. It would, I took the opportunity on Christmas Eve morning and Christmas Eve day to visit the folks that play pickleball. I found them delightful people, very energetic, very sociable. It would seem to me, and also they expressed interest that, or willingness, I should say, that to come to an appropriate solution and to work to also help temper those costs. So, maybe this is, and that's what I did in our last meeting, is this to me is a little premature because I challenged for the neighborhood, for the pickleballers, and for staff to get together to, basically as Debbie pointed out, to devise a collaborative effort. And maybe this is a collaborative, an opportunity to devise a collaborative effort and develop a plan for a piece of ground that is a, to quote Mr. Skillcorn, "a diamond in the rough", to begin the cutting, the first facet or two of that diamond, and at the same time come to a, I want to see pickleball stay in Plattegorda. This is a welcoming, open community. It always has been. The good news, bad news, that turned, good news turned into bad news is pickleball mushroomed beyond anybody's wildest dreams. It became a little bit, I think, unwieldy for its particular location. We have a possibility to rectify that on a more permanent basis and modify a little bit what we're doing there. So, I'm just asking us to consider looking at the alternative of seeing if we could develop that ground and look into that ground as a possible longer-term, though initially more expensive. But I would, I want to point out, it would be a city asset, not a one-time expenditure. It would be like adding in addition to the home that's going to have a value that would go on for decades for the city of Plattegorda. So, I would just like to throw that out as an alternative for discussion today and hopefully to develop for discussion in the future.
Jahah?
I think that probably all these solutions, I mean ultimately, are not a benefit to the neighborhood. I say this because even with the fencing, with the vegetation, we would then have to think about compensating residents for the loss of their view, as well as the city itself losing the asset of the view. I think that as long as it remains there, it's problematic because it's just not a suitable place, but I would like to explore what Gary's saying in terms of that being a possibility. And I would say in terms of cost-wise, the cost of looking at the differential between the loss of property value based on now having this wall in front of you, we'd, I think we'd have to account for that as well. So, I think the cost of putting up these noise abatement strategies is not just the cost of that. It's going to be the cost to mitigate the loss of property values as well as the loss to the city itself of losing its waterfront asset.
Debbie or Lynn, do you have any comments on this?
Let me ask you a question. Is the acoustic fencing movable?
Is it movable?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, once you put it up, you can move it.
Okay, we need to do something right now to fix some of this problem that we have. That's my opinion. And even if we keep the courts open, we have to do something right now. I don't think this is an option anymore. I've listened to all sides of the equation. I've read every single email, very passionate emails from both sides of the equation, and as I've said at previous meetings, I've supported the Pickleplex group from the day that they started. I supported them when they first started in Gilchrist Park. But I also have to listen to the citizens of the downtown district. And, you know, we have to do something right now to help with the noise mitigation. And whether we leave eight courts open, or knock it down to four, or whatever we end up doing, we have to do something right now for as long as it's in Gilchrist Park. And we can't just shut it down. I mean, that's a given. So, my opinion is we have to come up with something that we can do today.
The, any kind of solution that would require acoustic fence, or whatever it would be, would have to go out to bid. So, the procurement guidelines would take a while for us to do this. Pickleplex will be up and running in probably less than 60 days. Or, let's say, 60 days, within 60 days. Our procurement guidelines, we can't possibly get a fence up that quickly. So, I am disappointed in that the renovation of Gilchrist Park Area Two, that we have not focused on the need to put the parking in. I realize that as it's been explained to me, that the priority of putting in the Harbor Walk, but I see we have a problem. And the Harbor Walk's not a problem. The problem is the parking and what the pickleball has, has the unintended consequences of what we have created. And so, I think it would be my priority to focus on the parking along Reta Esplanade, which then would necessitate us closing that area so that then the pickleball, and one of the things we've talked about as a pickleball, Pickleplex team, has been trying to get the Pickleplex up and operational before anything had to happen in Gilchrist Park so that, so that there were pickleball courts available for people to go play. So, it would give us, once Pickleplex is up and running, it would give us the opportunity to then have pickleball play, go to the Pickleplex. We, as a city, can work with the Pickleplex team to promote that, and we could then work on that area of the park. In the meantime, we have to, I agree, come up with what is it we want to do. But it would give us time to come up with what is the option because in completing that area of Gilchrist Park, there couldn't be any pickleball play at that time.
Or tennis.
Or tennis, because we would be working on that area of the park. So, that would mean a moratorium on play, and then that would give us an opportunity to explore other options. So, I think in that way, we're just focusing on what area of the park we're going to focus on first, or maybe it's concurrently. And I'm okay with that, too. But I think it would give us the opportunity to then not spend funds on this area when we may determine that we have a better choice. Debbie?
Well, I also conducted some focus groups over the vacation, and I included pickleball players as well as homeowners in the Historic District. The noise, of course, was always an issue, but the real thing that, like, we can fix immediately is the parking. And every time that I've done my little drive-bys or my little, you know, I just want to get a feel for what's going on there, there have been parking places in the parking lots, both in front of the pickleball courts and down further along the road. There's, I don't even see that that's going to be an issue. We can fix the parking now, and we owe it to those people, our fellow citizens, to do that. And I think that's a pretty easy fix. I don't think we should spend any money right now on noise mitigation. For one thing, it's not going to go in until after, you know, we've already had another decision to face. So, I think we should wait. I mean, if we could buy the fence tomorrow and put it up and then move it wherever we decide to put pickleball courts, that would be great. But it's, that's not the situation. But let's fix what we can fix.
Well, and I got a question to Howard. If we were to prioritize putting the parking in and knowing, how long would it take, how long would you see a moratorium so that it would give us time to decide what it is we were going to do, that we have a permanent solution?
Well, if you want to switch the order, right now, Phase Two, we plan to do the Harbor Walk first. So that we could open up the Harbor Walk, and that would continuously stay open. People could enjoy the Harbor Walk while we fix the rest of the park. If you want to switch it, putting the parking in also requires stormwater. You have to do all at the same time. Also requires probably closing some functions, maybe even the playground at some time. While they do all of that, and then do the Harbor Walk last, that's going to impact the ability of people. We can do it, but that's going to impact the people who are going to be wanting to use the Harbor Walk continuously.
Nancy? I'm not talking about the phases. I'm talking about some no-parking signs and some enforcement of that. I think for, you know, a short-term fix to a long-term problem, I think if we could get some sort of handle on the parking, I mean, they consider it disrespectful. They consider this an, a real eyesore to the beauty of the Historic District. And I think that's the least we could accommodate them and enforce the no-parking. And then, you know, do it however phased you want to, but let's get them off the grass.
Gary?
First of all, I agree. One thing that I did see that, I realize people are parking on the grass and that's, but there is at least one individual that parks a motorhome on the grass, and I think that was a little bit much, although I guess the restroom facilities would be very convenient. Pickleplex is opening up right around February 19th. So, let's just, just for the sake of my little discussion, that Pickleplex opens up on the 19th, and we want to encourage Pickleplex's usage. But at the same time, from my perspective, you know, philosophically, I want to see pickleball stay within the city limits. Yet, we have a parking issue that's also an acute issue that's going on right now. So, what if we say that the day or the week after, some very short period of time after Pickleplex opens, that we close four of the courts? And reduce the availability of pickleball within the park to basically half of what it is right now for that interim, while we determine what other real long-term solutions there would be. And the four courts that we'd use would be the ones that are closest to the harbor.
That's what I said earlier.
Yeah, but I'm just, I agree with Lynn, okay. And it didn't even hurt. But what I want to say is, in the process, incorporate that into this, as I agree with Debbie, this collaborative effort that we would like to promote between all three communities. The three communities being the Historic District, the pickleballers themselves, and us as a city staff, so that we can come up with a, we might find that, you know, four work really well there and everybody can be, you know, that might be a simple solution. Or we might go, I still like the idea of moving to another piece of ground. So, anyway, I agree with Lynn, and I just think that, why don't we just do it?
I didn't say it for that reason. I said it because I think that may cut the demand down for the amount of traffic that's going to be in Gilchrist Park. The reason I asked if the fencing is movable is because if we do decide to put it up, we could either relocate the court to the tennis courts, or we could eventually possibly use Henry Street. And it would be an investment well worth having spent the money on. And so, that was the reason why I asked that question. It wasn't, wasn't just a flippant question. I think we have to look at some real solutions today, and we have to make some decisions that are good for everybody because I think this is a long-term problem that we have to fix as soon as we can and work together to make it happen somehow, some way.
May I ask a question of Marion?
Sure.
Marion can come back in?
She's probably across the way. You asking for procurement, how long is it going to take?
Not, well, it's a related question to that, but it, I wanted to know whether or not this material is proprietary to this company, and if it was, maybe it could be a sole source procurement.
You can, yes, we have the ability to do sole source on emergency basis, and if there's really no other comparable product out there, like for instance in our water plant or our sewer plant, if we have a particular valve or a particular part of the plant that's of a particular product, and there's no other vendors out there that sell that product, and that's what works with our plant, yes, we can do a sole search. But I don't know enough about acoustic fencing.
There she is.
I mean, so I don't know if that would qualify as a sole source, or I really don't know.
Wait, we're talking sound block materials?
I mean...
Well, I've been reading their materials, and they make it seem like that they're proprietary, and, but that's why I'm asking the question.
I don't...
Yes, sir.
The question is, the question is the acoustic fence material. If council wanted to, could they consider that sole source?
No.
I didn't think so.
And the reason being is, we could go out for a sole source.
It's okay to take a breath.
It's long run. But we can put it out as a sole source and see if anyone's protesting. If they don't, then we can proceed.
It does appear there's more than one source for these types of material.
Yeah, I mean, when we use sole source, like I described, or in an emergency, I'm much, in my opinion, I don't think this qualifies.
No, and that's why, I mean, I wanted to know if, just like you were saying with the RO plant, is this a product that only one company manufactures? And if it is, then we can sole source it. If it's not, if they're comparable out there, then it can't be. But I thought the question ought to be asked.
What's the estimated cost? Does it even have an estimated cost for it?
Sixteen thousand.
That's an informal quote. So, we can get informal quotes, which is maybe, they probably come see the site, so probably be about a week and a half to get quotes it.
Okay, that's better.
So...
Well, I'm hearing, if we want to recap what we have so far, because I've heard from pretty much everybody up here.
Yes.
We have, one suggestion was to get a group together to look at a more long-term solution such as, such as the possibility of a location called, at the West Henry site. That's more long-term. I heard some discussion regarding as soon as Pickleplex opens, or shortly thereafter, a day or a week, that we reduce the number of courts at Gilchrist Park from the current, eight down to four, actually sixteen down to, no, eight down to four.
Eight down to four.
Eight down to four, and keep the ones open farthest away from Reta. I heard possibility of putting in an acoustic fence type of siding, which can be movable if we ever relocate. And I also heard some discussion regarding either banning parking on the grass immediately or as soon thereafter Pickleplex opens, or monitoring the parking situation if you reduce it from eight to four.
Well, and I actually suggested changing the priority.
Changing the priority of Phase Two and not do the Harbor Walk first, but do the park renovations first.
So, we have lots of options. Jahah, you haven't said anything.
Want to chime in on the last one. I like that one. There was a resident that reported this morning there were 38 cars at 10:00 AM, so it shows the gravity of the parking situation. I think it's worth considering making that a priority.
And, so are you suggesting the ban of the parking or changing?
What you're saying, changing the order.
Changing the order and moving, correcting the parking?
Now, remind you, changing the order does not mean that the parking on the grass is going to go away very soon. I mean, we have to finish the bid specs, get it out on the street, get the bids back, award the contract, and we didn't plan on doing the utility work until March. So, we won't, we won't start the parking and the rest of the park until after that.
I would say that in conjunction with, once Pickleplex opens, reducing the number of courts.
So, I'm hearing support for when the Pickleplex opens, reducing the number of courts that play is what I seem to be hearing.
I'm for that point in time. That's just, but that's only a little bit of what I want. I also want to stay a long-term group to really look at solving the issue, not the, I wouldn't want us just to have four courts perpetually and say, okay, and watch, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Well, and we talked about having a group look at a long-term solution anyway. At our last council, special council meeting, and we seem to agree with that.
I really want...
Checking your head, Debbie.
Yeah, well, I just, you know, if the best we can do is to cut it down to four courts once the Pickleplex opens, then I think the least we can do is to enforce no parking on the grass.
I agree.
Now.
So, I'm hearing, once the Pickleplex is open, reduce the courts from eight to four. I'm hearing, we need a group to process a long-term solution because we do need that. We also want to ban the parking now. And...
About the phasing.
What's about the phasing? Two of us have talked about the phasing, and that's going to... Do we already have contracts in place?
No, no, no. We have not bid it yet.
For the Harbor Walk at all?
We have not bid it yet. We're getting ready to bid it. And again, the idea was to get the Harbor Walk done first, so there's always a connection and it's always open. That was the idea.
Well, it's not always going to be open during construction, no matter when it is.
Oh, yeah, the Harbor Walk will remain open. They can then do the rest of the construction. That was the idea.
Gary, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, I have two comments. One is, as if we cut down to four, I think we still should consider putting up a noise abatement material.
Agreed.
I don't think we should change the, and I have another, second reason for, another kind of why to do that. I don't think that we should change the order. I think we should just ban the parking right now and not change the order, put up a piece of noise abatement material, and here's my reason for it. My reason for it is, is it'll probably be looking pretty obnoxious, and it'll force us to keep our eye on the long-term solution to make this right, instead of letting it fall to the wayside, as the original conversations that Nancy and I in the previous council had when we talked about noise abatement three years ago. Then, you know, if we do a solution that all of a sudden the den quiets down, we have other issues and we won't tackle it. So, I think that we should purposely leave it a little bit obnoxious for us to keep our focus on solving this, in a real long-term solution, whether it's to develop additional park land or whatever we want to do. Three years ago, I, just to add, what Boulder, Colorado did, if you remember my presentation, they built a big pit and then built the berms and then put the pickleball in these pits. And it's kind of beautiful, you know, because it fits within the mountains and so forth, but that was so that they could put it in a residential area. We don't want to go to that extent, especially with our water table, but... But I think that, I would say that we should ban the parking but not change the order in which we develop it, and so that the park stays as usable as possible through the construction phase.
Okay. You look like you're going to say something.
You want me to recap where I think we might be?
Well, that's, I was gonna, yeah. So, what I'm hearing is, once a Pickleplex is open, that we should reduce the courts from eight to four, and they would be the four courts...
Farthest away from Reta.
Farthest away from the, from the Reta Esplanade, closest to the harbor.
Yes.
That we would have an acoustic fence or a sound blocking material, maybe I should word it that way, a sound blocking material around the four courts. That could be used, then moved. Okay? So, we know this is a temporary solution. That we would ban the parking now, and that we would have a group that will actually look for the long-term solution.
Yep, that's what I'm hearing.
Is...
If we do, if we do, if council does approve that order, you also need to appropriate the funds for the sound barrier. Yeah, that's about it, just a sound barrier, I guess.
Jahah, what are you, you know, you and I were the only two that were talking about the order of things. I'm good with shifting the order. I just want to make sure that we're... I, I'm, I'm good with shifting the order, I just want to make sure that we're responsive.
Yeah.
The, one of the reasons why I was in favor of, of the ord- of shifting the order, it would have us closing down the area by the pickleball courts. And it would, we would by necessity then have a, a complete moratorium on play altogether, which would also give us an opportunity. But if we can, if we can work expeditiously on getting a sound barrier, it may help us get something-
I mean, one thing I thought you're saying-
Something more in play.
Now, is that, I mean, we, we would get the, the community used to, to other places if there was that temporary moratorium. I mean, that, that's a positive to that.
But the moratorium isn't going to happen for several months. I mean, it, it, at best, it probably wouldn't happen until when?
Are you asking?
If we had to do utility work first and then before you start to do any of the parking, which is what you said, that we wouldn't be able to then start the parking project so that, where, where there would be a moratorium on play until?
If we, if we, did the utility work in March, March, April? If we kept the order that we currently have, which is the Harbor Walk first and then the park and the parking area last, you're not talking about getting to that phase to probably the end, oh, at least the end of the calendar year, if not into 2020.
But I'm talking about if we were to shift the priority.
Oh, shift the priority?
Because that's one of the conversations you and I had, was that we wouldn't get to having a moratorium on any of the play until at the end of this year or beginning of next. But if we shifted the priority and you still have to do the utility work first, when would you be done with the utility work so that you would start the parking work?
We wouldn't even start the rest, if we shifted it and did the Harbor Walk last, we would then do the rest of the park, the permanent parking in the park area and the off-street parking and the stormwater, we, that probably wouldn't be started till the summer.
So we still need a temporary, having a temporary solution is-
Yeah, what we've talked about already, that can be the temporary solution until such, until the summer.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying that what we discussed earlier in terms of the, the immediate enforcement of parking as well as the lessening of courts, that could be kind of the, the stopgap until the summer when we can start.
So, so the issue then becomes, if we shift the priorities, then we are talking about starting the parking project maybe in, sometime in the summer versus six months later. So the question I have then is, 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 is it worth it for six months to shift the priority if we cut back on the courts?
You know, if we do shift the priority, I'm not even sure, we would probably want to bid the whole project out all at once. Just close it, just like we did Phase One. I mean, or give the, let the contractor tell us when they would do the Harbor Walk at that point in time. Economies of scale, they may bid and just do the whole thing all at once. We'll see. But the idea is, do you want to shift the priority or not on the phasing? Again, the, the thought process was to try and keep the park open as long as we could.
Yeah. If you do it all at once, then you can't do that.
No, you can't.
That's a big deal. And, and whatever we do in Gilchrist has to be done before we start on Ponce, or we're going to really have a problem. Because those are our two main city parks, well, two of the three anyway.
But isn't Ponce not starting till next spring?
No, Ponce, realistically now, because of the design, we probably won't start that till 2020.
And we, what we also have to be aware of is that if we get into next season, there are festivals and all kinds of events that take place in the city parks during seasonal months. And that's another whole issue we have to be concerned with.
Yeah. Now fortunately, the events in Gilchrist occur in the Phase One area and-
But we still need the parking.
Yes.
So is the, the question I have for Jaha, since you, this is your district, is coming up with this solution, which is, we all agree, a temporary solution. Is this a good solution temporary to help soften the impact of pickleball play in Gilchrist Park until such time that we can go ahead and, and construct? If we were to stay on the, the current schedule?
On, on the current construction schedule?
Yes.
What, or, so what would the?
That means that we would not be working on park, on, working on the parking on Reta until the end of this calendar year? Which would be, is what I heard you say.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, because it's going to take a while to, to do that Harbor Walk. And, and until we get the bids back and the actual schedule, I'm just estimating.
Okay.
See, parking is, preface is, is honestly almost equal as a problem as the noise. So I, I, I mean, the preference would be for us to do as you suggested in terms of changing the order. I mean, that would be the ideal.
And that would put a moratorium on the play?
It could, yeah, because I'm not sure how the people are going to get in there to play while all this is under construction.
We couldn't.
No.
For the record, Urban Design, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager, the, the reason for the separation was to keep the bathroom and the playground open for as long as we could. There are no two real projects. It is all one project that we phased to allow access to all of the amenities, as many as we can during that timeframe.
Right.
So if you, if you decide to do the parking, we do the parking and the Harbor Walk as one, because there will not be availability to enter those amenities from the Harbor Walk.
Again, that was our thought process.
Correct.
So we would have to close down the playground and?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, it's it-
Playground, bathrooms.
Thank you, Joan, you just made up my mind.
Yeah, so it, it sounds like it, we try, trying to come up with some kind of a, a compromise, a compromise that we agree that it's a temporary solution, but it's, it's a step in the right direction.
Well, one thing, if it were all to be done at once, I mean, would the project be completed faster? I mean, is, is, is this being broken out or, I'm just saying if you-
She said no.
Not necessarily, because it's going to be two separate areas, two separate groups probably working with it. So you don't put two contractors doing two different things in there.
Okay.
It would still be one, under one contractor, but two subcontractors.
Okay.
We don't know. The, the answer to that is, until we get the bids back and the schedule, I'm not sure how much they can speed it up. Don't know.
Okay. Debbie?
I propose that we put a, you know, fix the parking now with signs or whatever we have to do. And then just proceed the way Urban Design designed it. There, there was a reason they did it. We trust their judgment. I think that's what- Should I make an emotion?
Well, we have-
I don't think we're there yet.
We have several- We have four, we have four things.
Four things.
We have four things right now. What I'm hearing is that there's not a full, council, enough support, Jaha, for our notion. So what I'm looking at here are the four things that we are, that we would want to entertain a motion to do. So let me go over those. One is, and perhaps I'll say, one is, we will have a group that will work on a long-term solution. And that, and we have to define who that group is. Number two, we will reduce, once the Pickleplex is open, we will reduce the number of courts at, available from eight into, to four. And those courts would be the courts furthest or closest to the Harbor Walk. Probably those four, yes. And then the, number three, we will put acousta fence or a sound, excuse me, a sound-
Barrier.
Barrier fencing around those four courts.
Well, when you say around off-
It would probably have to be along this-
The fence closest to Reta.
In a V shape.
We could do a V if you want. Now, the V, now this fence here is very low.
Uh, but it's, what's going to ha- have to happen is, if those four, the four courts that you see up there that are closest to the Harbor Walk, they don't have a tall fence to the, below them, they, to, to, on the Reta esplanade side. So we would need to then, how would we put up an acousta fence?
Acousta fence would go right here on the southwest.
We'd put it on the south part.
Right here, south part, closest to Reta, right here.
Okay.
No, no, not there, right there, there you go. That would be the coast of fence. This, this, the other side on the V, that's a low fence.
Mm-hmm. There's a, it's a, it does turn the corner a little, but not a lot.
Not a lot. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we can to try and put up as much as we can there.
Okay.
I mean, does the fence have to be on four sides? I thought that's the science behind it.
You want to do all four?
I mean, I'm saying if, if it's going to be, if it's going to work, I would say we'd have to do it.
Don't we need the fencing company to tell us what we need? I mean, wouldn't it be best to let the experts?
No, the fencing company is going to do what we tell them what we want.
Well, I mean, to tell us what to get our maximum, because if you just put up a tiny little piece, I don't, I don't know how that would-
You know, some of the fence along the Pickleplex Court is not very sturdy.
We would have some additional fence posts.
So we would have some, we would have to put up some, replace some fence material.
Yeah, we would.
So the fact that we're going to have to replace some fence material, then maybe we would replace the fence material closer to the, the actual courts that are still open.
We can go ahead and bid out, we can bid it out what it would cost to do the whole thing versus what it would, might cost to do just part of it and bring back to you the bids.
But we're going to be able to get that quick quote, right?
Well, depending on what the cost is, yes. If it comes back over a certain amount, no.
Marion Pace Procurement Manager, I have my breath now. If we are going to seek bids for the entire diameter or perimeter of the pickleball court, that could potentially exceed our bid threshold of 50,000. Even though we might be asking for an optional pricing just in case for a lower amount. So now it would be a formal bid process, which is a little bit longer, by, maybe about a week, week and a half longer than an informal quote, once we get all the specs from the department to bid out.
Well, week and a half's not that big a deal.
Right.
A month and a half would be. Okay. Thank you.
But we're hearing, I'm hearing support to at least put up some fencing, some sound barrier.
That is, that's item number three. Item number four is to ban the parking along Reta Esplanade now. On the grass. And I would say that if we're going to ban it on the grass, we need to also respect the homeowners across the street, that we're banning it, on the, we're banning it on the grass on their right-of-way, because I think what's going to happen is people will then park on the, on their lawns. And, and so we need to respect the homeowners.
I understand that. And there are some houses on Reta that, of course, it's down farther towards Harvey, where that's their only entrance to their house is parking on the grass in front of their house. So we can't ban parking totally on, on the south side of Reta. But-
Can we do it by neighborhood permit?
Oh, my God.
Oh, wow. No.
Well, I mean, there are communities that do that.
Yes, I understand. That's a whole nother issue. That's a whole nother issue. And now we're, um, um, then I guess what I would look to is, well, then where would we ban the parking?
On, on the park property.
Yeah, the park property.
If we really can only-
Yeah.
It's, right now, we'll say the park property.
And if people park in their lawns, we-
And, and then we monitor it. And if it becomes a problem for homeowners, then we have to address that at a different time.
Yes, okay.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
That'll help move, yes, okay.
An effort to move this along.
Yes, we've got to move this along. So that's what we have, are the four things. Got it? Okay.
I'm making a motion for approving those four things.
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the four items that we discussed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Can I have one more motion that you approve the use of our sales tax, which is part of the park project anyways, to fund the improvements?
I so move.
I'll pump you back with an actual cost.
Motion and a section, motion and a second to approve using local option sales tax dollars-